Alright, so let's get started. My I'm kind of taking back what I said in one of my videos that I didn't want to continue to do, I guess, copy work after I finished the Airbnb website. Yeah, I think just from like the the UI design classes that I've been taking. They show that like copy work is a strategy to get your your UI skills up to par. And I think it's also useful to like If I really go through these quickly, I can also pick up like onboarding or um different flows that users go through from app to app. And it really helps set like expectations on what a typical app experience looks like. What are the uh interactions, the uh microinteractions? Animations. Yeah, all those little like details that go into a typical app. And so my goal is just to like work on it an hour every single day. And I'm gonna start off with Walmart app. I was gonna do Stripe, but have to do like a whole signup process, so cancelled that. Then I was interested in doing Workday, but there's this kind of um I would have to reveal, I I guess, too much personal information to do it just quickly. So I'm I'm just gonna start with the simple one that I didn't even need to log in and yeah, Walmart. So let's first start off by making this a frame. Yeah, I guess. That's fine, and call this Walmart screenshots. And I think one thing I'm gonna try to do a little bit differently than the last time that I made something is I wanna try to make the graphics as well. Maybe. Undecided, but for now, I'll just leave like an empty box for this video probably because I this will probably take me like three, four hours. While I'm still getting up to par, so. Yeah. I'll leave any graphics that are detailed like this empty. Uh so let's see. Let's get started. Here. Which one do I have? I just remembered what I can do. Google Chrome. And iPhone twelve Pro Max. Screen size. But that does not help. Maybe pixel size? Four two eight, nine two six. So this is two. Okay, let's actually resize. That's more realistic. Whatever. Why? Oh. Top, actually. This is no. Oh, gotcha. No, I'm not doing this. Okay. Finally. Now we have shop. Let me just get this on my phone. And oh, there you go. Is it command R? Shift or command R? Whatever. Search. Command R. Is this command R? Wait. Huh. Accounts and then we have my items has another two. Now the one thing that's common across everything is the menu. So we're gonna make another frame. Uh why isn't it? Oh. Duh. Components and I'm blinking. What was my plan? Let's just go here. I don't remember what I was gonna do. Oh, I think I remember. Okay. So I need the the iPhone iOS kit, so I need to look that up. Okay, so Apple already has iOS seventeen available, just Apple's public account. And stuff. Okay, this is what we want and oh. Walmart. Paste here. Perfect. Yeah, that's exactly what I want. This we need to instance, make it its own here. I thought there was a name to these. What happened to my? Oh, there you go. This is a status bar. Oh, duh. Okay, so I have status bar now. And SF symbols. So if I open this up, we can look for some of the icons. It looks good enough. I'll just use this heart. Copy image. We can just paste it here. And this needs to be filled in. Oh, but they're gonna be filled in gray. Oh, no, 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 no. Huh. So there's two of them. So we'll keep that one, but we also need this one. This one will be it's like this kind of gray. How can I? I'm gonna have to judge it by eye. So actually, well, let me see. It's like right there. Cause that's too dark. And that's too light. Wait, I said right here is too light. This is too dark. Okay. Originally, I was looking at the numbers at thirty six. Wait, no, not thirty six. Oh, sixty one in brightness is too bright. And thirty five. Sixty one to thirty five. So then it would be more light. Forty. It's too bright, so fifty five to thirty six is two. Fifty? I think fifty looks reasonable. Yeah, that's fine. So now we know fifty. How do I store this? Style. Ooh, this is a good place to use variables. Uh right? If I remember. Create a variable color. This would be icon gray. And this would be this one? Yep. And then okay, so I have this variable, then what do I do with it? Icon gray. Okay, yeah. And then all the icons would be this color or I can change. So that's this one. Now this one, how can I gouge, gouge, gauge this Walmart blue? It's kind of like right there. Ooh. Near perfect. It's kind of like that. I'll keep that. We can work with that. So let's just copy this and click somewhere else, local variables. Add another color. Walmart blue. In this, we'll set it to, oh. Cool. So each of these are gonna have each of these are gonna be components and they're gonna have a variant. And this variant I actually want to be commish R. What is, I wonder if there's a good way to do this? Just cover it? No. Does quite work. No, they're not even like wait, so what is? No idea what's going on. Oh, wait, where's my parts? So maybe copy. Doesn't look right. I don't understand what's going on. Let me look this up. Okay, I think I got it. So let's just repeat it to make sure. Okay, so what I'm gonna do is make this a master component. But then I place it in here, just wherever. And yeah, that's it. So property, let's see, this would be fill. And this would be true. This would be false. So then if we have one of these hearts, we can just just like that. So now this is the heart. Why that took so long? I don't know. But now that we have that, we're gonna have to do some of our own. Ah. Okay, not done actually. So this was a nice step, but it wasn't everything that needed to be done. Uh let's see, so let's do like um so these are twenty by twenty basically. Uh let's see. And kind of text is that? It's a little bit like almost like this one. This really seventeen is two. Twelve. Regular. And if we make this the same shape, or same same color. Libraries icon gray. Okay, yeah, so we can see there's why do I fix this? If I do left and right. No, wait, first you center it and then you could do left and right. Okay. Gotcha. Um. And actually this, let's go here. And details. This one. So we can better gauge how far away it is. Here it looks like the text is like maybe twelve pixels. So let's do one, two. Another one and then shift. No, that's a little too far. You like eight, three, four. Or the T, so it is even closer now. Like six. Yeah, that's fine. And then twelve looks kind of accurate. But um I wonder if there's a way for like sensor versus surf. This one looks a little bit more more accurate or closer. Yeah, but I just yeah, but that spacing looks good. The M is fine, actually. Yeah, so there's still some slight differences. Particularly like in the M and the Y. Just very slight. Uh let's see. Actor is pretty good. Hmm. I don't know. I was I was having trouble seeing where the issue, the issues, the differences were. But I saw them. Yeah, this is gonna take a while. I think I might just go with wait. No, maybe. Yeah, but it's not variable size, I think. Yeah, so I won't even explore this one. Figma does need to like or it would be a nice tool. Oh, wait, wait, wait. Okay, so I won't say it out loud. I think it's kind of obvious, like if you gauge what I'm trying to do. There's an idea there. Um so I won't say it further. But let's go. Oh, wait, 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 wait. Not quite, but still. Wait, 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 wait. Items. No, it's not quite the same. No, I don't want to spend too long on this. I think this is fine. Yeah, 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 yeah. I think it's fine. It's giving the same energy. Um yeah, so this is done. We can detach this. And then just make this all a master component and let's see, uh frame one. My items. And then we'll add a variant. This variant we'll make a copy of and then we'll fill with let's see, my item. No. So shouldn't this have a default? No. Guess I'll just delete that. Uh wait, yeah, shouldn't it have? No, I detached it. Yeah, I think that's why. Okay, so then this we detach. Make it a master component, delete this. Huh. What is going on here? Detach, detach, detach. Is this? How do I? Wait, what's going on? This is a mess. Master component, main component. Okay, so let's just dumb this down for me. And then this we detach. And so now this. And so now this. Why is it still purple? Well, is it just because it's part of? Yeah, I guess. So this is cool. Now here we have property one, this is, this is, this is filled. And this one is. No, wait. False. True and then. Cool. Okay, so now, oops. This should change. Okay, some some slight differences. Absolutely in the center. Should be as well, so now. There we go. Actually, let me compare this. Almost perfectly. Look at that. Okay, not perfect, but almost perfectly. So that's. What are we at? Thirty-one minutes already? Uh, so that's that one. Now we can do search, which yeah, I'd prefer to do search first. So go here, search. Copy image, paste it. This will go with libraries icon gray. Uh, I'm also getting a hint of like. That and see. No, that is not the one, so. So this, what I want is for it to stay. At the left and top. So then when I. Okay, that's what I wanted. In this, nope. I wonder if it's possible to. Uh, too far. Or maybe if I just reduce the stroke? No, I guess I can't. Yeah, uh, wait, wait. Music? Oh, it is, it is, it is, okay. I think that's closer. And then just need change the size a little bit. Shift. I think that'll pass. It's a little bit larger. But that's fine. So that's that and then we can just copy this. Hmm, that's going to be, going to be another issue. So this will detach instant. Perfect. And then copy this. Press shift R. Nice. The only issue is that there's a little bit more space. That much space? I think so. And then I just need draw lines. No, hold on. Did I not frame it? And then three lines about five pixels. Yeah. Wait, why do they look maybe? No, it's not that. Maybe if I do like a shift? No, K. Uh, that helps. No, no. No, it's not shift, it's K. There's something off about my hamburger. One, two. Maybe do three pixels? Yeah. Plus you like. No. Kind of. Okay, I think I got it. Okay, that looks good. Copy this. No, yeah, I should just copy everything. Actually, let's group it first. And then copy in place. Perfect. One more blue. Nice. And so this, oh, let's see if we can make it. Oh, okay, that is actually better than. The roundabout way that I would make master components last time. So search is now finished. Why does it look kind of slightly different though? Wait. Uh, okay. Maybe create components. There we go, there we go. So property one is filled. This would be. False. This is true. Next, let's go for services. What are we at? Forty-one minutes? Uh, yeah, let's go for services. Wait, let me check count. It's so close. I'll just leave it there for whenever, but this is. Three, four, five, six, seven. About seven pixels in diameter. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's kind of cheating, but. No fill. And the stroke, we want it to be icon gray. So now these are about like one pixel. Two. No, I feel like they're one. One and a half maybe. But I think there's an issue. Okay, so maybe let's retry that. One, one. No, that doesn't quite solve it. Nine by nine? I think that one's better. Hmm, it's like. I don't know how to describe it. But it's good enough. Services. Actually, what happens when this one is? Oh, they're filled. Oh, wait, let's. Copy this to be consistent. Shift R, oh, uh, detach, detach. R, copy. So then we can delete this. This, I should have made this a UI card and then I can replace all the backgrounds. Or all the, these tiny frames if it doesn't work out or if it's too large. But I think it should be fine as long as they'll have equal distance. For example. Yeah, so I think it should be fine. Equal distance. Hopefully. Uh, so let's see. Have this one make a copy. Here, all of these will now have. No stroke, but they will be filled. With. A Walmart blue. Services. Will also have a Walmart blue. Select both of them. Oops. Here, create component set. Now this property is going to be filled. It's going to be false. It's going to be true. Okay, so now that we have those two. The heart itself was around twenty pixels. So this is, oh, it's already about the same size that we want it, but there's an issue because if I can maybe. Huh. There we go. I didn't know that would work, but it did. But see if. Wait, five. Actually, let's see if I can adjust it just slightly. And. No. So if I copy, select this one, select this one. Now. This one. And this one. Oh, I see the issue. One, one and one. One, one. And then make the body just one. Okay, so that was good. Now the other thing is. This needs to be. Just a little bit more circular. Maybe one more? No, that throws it off. Okay, I think that's fine. But the other thing is. Okay, so this is the circles. Wait, but. Okay, so this is the circles. Wait, but. Oh, what did I do? Ah. What I'm trying to do is minimize this, because there is. If I, let's see, do the pen tool, go from. Here to now. Should I just be content with this? I'll leave it for now. It's just, it just looks double stroked at the bottom. But it's fine. Selection color icon. And this is. Accounts. And then, or this, we copy this. Make another one. And here, we just do Walmart blue. Can delete this, right here, here. Create component sets. So now, just the shop. But I think I'll do the shop tomorrow. This is bothering me a little bit. I think I'll look at material icon tomorrow, see if I can find something better. And. These were fine. I think so. Uh, yeah, so that looks good. Took longer than I wanted, but. I want to see if I can feel like I can say we're making good progress. I have to make the logo. Once I make the logo, I can knock that out in a lot of places. This is just cards, which are easy to make. Maybe I should make like a. Main button. Um. I can do it tomorrow. I don't know why. This would help me, just looking at what's left to create. Yeah. I think the, 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 the point is just to get familiar with what they have, what's been done. And just develop like my. Innate uh, skills, my skills, unconscious skills. Alright, so what can, oh. I actually did not finish this. How can I comment? Add half circle. Okay, so I'll do that tomorrow.